So that's what my guess is. Because he's really concerned about. That's me here.
I can have a joy and check.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. Well, thank you. All right, I will call the roles. Jana Dykett.
President.
Timothy Wells.
President.
Kelly Hooper.
President.
Jo Katraski.
Here.
Amelie Brue.
Here.
And Caroline could not be with us because I believe she has the starring role in this play, and so she is at practice. Any adjustments to the agenda?
There are no adjustments tonight. We want to remind people both of Zoom and Zoom 10.
Do we have Zoom members?
Is nobody on Zoom?
I'm trying to scroll, sorry. One, two, three outside people and a couple of internal.
Okay. Yeah, so if anybody from Zoom would like to speak, please raise your hand. And at the appropriate time, Mike will unmute you so you can speak, or you can write something in the chat and Mike will read it for you. Oh, and can you please give your first and last name? Okay. I will undertake a motion to approve the minutes of the Winter School Committee meeting of December 1st, 2021 as written or with corrections.
Sir, move.
Sir, move and seconded, discussion. Unanimated call of vote, all those in favor will pass as unanimous. Superintendent report.
So I've sent it in the packet. And a couple things I wanted to go over. I shared some of this with the school committee, but this is more for public. Did have a Zoom meeting on Monday. We now have pretty much every Monday with the commissioner. And she informed us that the CDC will be reviewing their guidelines, their SOP, anticipating some changes. I have no idea exactly what will be coming down. We talked about it a little bit at the administrative team meeting today. The superintendents were advised to write to Dr. Shaw and to Commissioner Lember.
Lember? Yeah, Lember.
Lember, yeah. From the DHHS, just to weigh in on what we'd like to see. I think this is our, an attempt to try and address the issue that is greatest concern to, it's been the greatest concern for you guys, for our communities, including here in Winthrop. I would think the biggest thing is the number of kids that are quarantining, the number of days of school that are missing, and the impact on education. So I got some information from the administrative team today, and I'm in the process of drafting my letter. It's, well, we had a, the person who's in charge or on executive committee for Maine Schools Open Tennis Association sent us a copy for a letter. It's sort of a model, so I'm just modifying that. In addition to its, the impact on students and community members, I wanted to make them even more aware of the impact on having students quarantined, the number of students that are quarantined, on our teachers with respect to what it takes, the additional energy and stress it takes for our teachers to do the job of teaching the students that are in front of them and the students that are at home. And then I further spoke about the stress on our nurses in respect to, with respect to, you know, this year they're not just doing their job, which is already a full-time job, but they've taken on the additional responsibility of doing the pool testing, which I think now we all agree is a really, really good thing. But what it does, it puts them in a pseudo-administrative position where they have to coordinate all those people. And, you know, there's so many roles that go with that that they are, they're taking on and are doing an exceptional job with. And I don't think this is just true for Winthrop, but I know that it's very true for Winthrop. And I mentioned this today with the administrative team. Our teachers aren't interested in just doing their jobs. They really want to do their jobs well. And I think a lot of the stress that they're having is related to the fact that they, they don't want to just get by. They want to do it at a high low, and they are frustrated with, you know, just with everything. And so if there are ways that they can look at minimizing the amount of time that our students are in quarantine, then I think, you know, people are really in favor of that. At the same time, there are, we do certainly have a percentage of our staff that are very concerned about, if we have, if we don't have a lot of kids in quarantine, that means we have kids that are potentially in school who are going to cause greater risk for our adults. Because obviously, the adults are at greater risk of having negative impacts of COVID. But I think that's where the struggles are going to be moving forward. So I don't know what'll come out. They said they hope to have new guidelines out before January 1st. I think I mentioned earlier when we were meeting that I had something from the nurses, and I went back and looked at it. And basically, the message from the nurses was they were hoping that the guidelines are by the 27th, which I thought was interesting. But I would be very impressed if they get it out by the 1st. If they get it out by the 27th, I'll be even more impressed. But it's, you know, I thought it was odd that they would ask for our input as superintendents around the state and then not give us time to provide that input. So that's a big deal. That's a huge, a huge deal as far as I'm concerned. The other thing I wanted to mention, I think it's huge for the community here, this is that I think the single biggest thing that I have heard, even though it doesn't necessarily impact a huge number of people, is differentiating, that the CDC still differentiates between in-school spread and an out, and a community spread. That's caused a lot of issues, not just here in Winthrop, but all over the state. And I suspect that they may be taking a different position on that, so.
As far as just going to ask, it seems weird that we would say that this is more dangerous than this, when they're the same disease.
Yeah. Yeah. I think the, I don't want to talk about individuals who are writing letters, but the person who's the executive committee member who gave us the letter to model basically points out that schools are the only institutions, for lack of a better term, that require a model of who's that we don't. Now, there's good reasons for that, I think, in some respects. But in terms of contact tracing and quarantining a lot of people, then, you know, other places, other places where people gather aren't necessarily, aren't doing that. And then furthermore, I think there's sort of a sense of, you know, I'm just speculating here, but I think the historical data that suggests that if we quarantine eight people because they were identified as close contacts throughout the day, because it isn't always about, you know, I've had a lot of, you know, because I asked you guys, we've had people say, you know, aren't you following all the guidelines? Why aren't you following the thing about if you were masked within, you know? We do follow that, but what our nurses are, well, primarily Nurse Melissa's saying is that it makes sense that if you are, you might be next to somebody closely masked in the classroom, but you're probably next to those same people at lunch where you're not masked, and you're playing with those people at recess where you're not masked. So it almost never is a result of being identified within the classroom. It's almost always the case. But my point, you know, my point there is, maybe the speculation is that if they're close contacts down the road, that we will go to possibly a protocol that says we will notify the parents and let them know that their child is close contact, and then the parents will decide whether they're going to keep them home or not. We have some parents who will absolutely want to do that. I think what we agreed to today was that all parents would want to know whether we require or don't require, and they still want to know. And I would expect as a parent that they would want to know. So I will tell you both of my real quick thing. My concern is still this, and it may be unpopular to just say this, but I think we are, we're still in a surge. We have more and more cases. We have more people hospitalized. It may be just timing, but it seemed, it was the last couple of weeks I've had more people that I know or know of that have died as a result of COVID. I went to a celebration of life on Friday night for a former employee, you know, in the former district, obviously, who died because of COVID. And so I always give this analogy of sort of the COVID mountain. And we're heading up this side, and the peak is up here. We're here. We're definitely getting up, but we're not, we haven't, we haven't. The curve is, the curve is still going up. We haven't flatlined it yet at all. And, and then there are other people who, who are thinking about COVID as a, you know, it's flu-like, fewer people, you know, fewer people are responding badly to it. I can't even use all the right terms, but I'm not trying to say that I'm right and they're wrong. But it's, you know, from my perspective, they've gone over the top of the mountain. They're heading down to the place where we all hope to. We know we'll get to someday, which is COVID's never going away, and it will be more flu-like then, and we will lose people to, you know, people will die from COVID every year, just like they die from flu every year. But we're not there yet. From my perspective, we're not either remotely close to there. Some people want to be here. I say we're here. So that's my sort of visual, I give it terms of that. At this point, it almost feels like the CDC is saying, kind of like they said to us when we had that special meeting. We tried everything. Right now, we don't have, we don't have the silver bullet. We don't have the best answer. And what we're doing is painful to community, to students, to teachers. You know, maybe we try backing off a little bit and see if it gets, if it gets worse, obviously, they can, they can change that. If it doesn't get worse, then maybe it makes it better for our teachers and for our students and for our parents. So I don't know that. It's all speculation. Please note that. But, you know, when the commissioner says it's a pretty major, we need to discuss. You know, I don't, that's where I think it's going to go. So I've had, actually, I want to talk more about this in executive session. But quite a bit of conversation, oh, I do want to say this for, because it's recorded for the record, in case somebody wants to. The commissioner started off with telling us that there have been 6,242 positives related to schools in the state of Maine in the past 30 days. 267 schools in outbreak status in the last 30 days in the state. That's almost half our schools in the entire state. So. 267. Last month, it was 167. I didn't, I was hoping to have the numbers for Winthrop that I give you, you know, today, but they, they still have shown the December 5th numbers, so I can't give those to you. So what the, where what she said after that becomes more of a bombshell because one of the things they're talking about is essentially starting January 1st, essentially cleaning the outbreak status slate completely. There'll be zero schools in outbreak status. And so we're sort of starting brand new. I have no idea what that's going to mean, but that's the only thing that we're sort of getting is just pretty clear information. I doubt they'll just clear the slate and say, let's just keep doing the same things we've been doing, because we'll be right back to outbreak status within a matter of days if things still change. But I don't know. It's, it's a, it's just a big deal. I did meet with, with town manager and with Brittany's voice, who's kind of doing our business management, that's our shade person, just to keep them up to speed regarding revolving renovation fund application. Joel will be giving me a list again, so I can give out to you again about what's in that application. But you should know that we're looking at a multi-pronged approach to some of our maintenance, our capital improvement issues that have been neglected here in Winthrop for a long time. And that is, we did a revolving renovation fund. We could potentially do, if we get this approved and if that all goes through, could potentially apply for another one. I don't think that's where the town manager wants to go. And we may, even if we get approved as a revolving renovation fund, there's some discussion about putting together the town's needs, our needs, in doing a bond as a community or a town and school combined. That was his idea. I thought it was a great idea, very impressive. And the third part of that, third prong of that is we are looking at, Joel and I have a meeting scheduled tomorrow, depending on the weather, with somebody who's going to come in and take, and tour our middle school and high school again, looking at a performance contract. And you've already talked about performance contracts before. But basically, they'll come in and they'll look at things that can be done to all aspects of the school. Heating, building envelope windows as part of envelope. Heating systems, all those types of things, and look at making repairs and or changes to upgrade all those things. And the savings from the efficiencies would pay for the cost of the project. So they guarantee it, and it is a guarantee. If they come in and say they will do it, they'll tell you what the projects are. They will tell you what the payback is. And there's a long process that I don't need to tell you about right now. But all I can, all I need to tell you is that if you, if they say it's not going to cost you any more money, and you don't save the money they saved that you're going to save, they're on the hook for paying that, not us. So it's a pretty good promise. And I asked them, when we interviewed people that form a district, how many times do you have to pay out any money based on performance contracts? Zero. Three of them, I mean, in high, highly, whatever, places that we use a lot or are used a lot, none of them have ever. So what they ultimately do is they will tell you it's a 15-year payback, and you'll have this type of savings. And the reality is probably more savings quicker, but they're not going to, they're not going to take that chance. So the reason I share all those things with you is if, if we don't have to borrow any money, even from the revolving renovation fund, and we can, we can, we can, and I told you, when I was in RSU 4, we did a $2.1 million performance contract, and it cost a taxpayer zero dollars, and it was all realized through savings. And we end up doing one of the things that I can tell you, Joel was here, he'd tell you, it's really a little bit frustrating, is that I don't know how we ever built a high school 20 years ago with one boiler. One boiler. Now, what I was told today was to say, I think this stuff won't mean much to me, but essentially, it's twice the size of a regular boiler. And so it would have twice the life. Well, that might make sense, but to me, you'd put two regular-sized boilers in, and you alternate them and extend the life. And if one goes down, you always have one. But whatever. But that's happening tomorrow. Did you have a question?
I didn't. No? No. No.
Okay. All right. Okay. So the address of my report is in writing. And we do have a list of winter coaches, but you know what? Do you guys have a list?
Yeah.
Because I keep it in mind.
It's on the back of our packet.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Yeah. Awesome. So that's a list of winter coaches and volunteers. We have one resignation, Justin Poirot here, great school, special ed, in Tech 3. That's it. Unless you have questions for me.
Do we not have Nordic and Alpine Speed coaches because we don't need them or because they just haven't been filled yet?
I don't believe they've been filled yet, but I wouldn't swear to that.
Correct.
And is that through Marinico?
Through Marinico.
Yeah, it's through Marinico.
Oh, that's, so you're probably right.
Well, Mr. Man Tassel started this winter when he works with the low kids. He's going to start having the high school kids raised as a volunteer type of thing to try to get that going again.
Okay.
At least so in the future we'll have that.
That would be nice.
Great. Thank you. Awesome. All right. For my chair report, I just want to remind you all that our next meeting, it will be in January. And so we kind of start over as far as the, at the first, very first meeting. Actually, the superintendent will start the meeting, and we will elect a chair and a vice chair. And then also, usually in January is when we talk about who's going to be on which committee. So just be thinking about that between now and the, and the committees you might want to be on and whoever might want to be chair and vice chair. Thank you very much for that. All right. Committee reports. Finance.
We get some warrants done and did a little bit of training as well. I've already emailed these to Colleen and to Jim. Payroll 10, 11, 11A, 11B, and 12. And general warrants 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16. And we were all caught up.
Yay.
We're all caught up.
All caught up.
Excellent. So for policy, we met at 5 o'clock today, and we're going to have five policies to bring forth next meeting. Four of them are fairly recent, but we're trying to have everything have a new date. So we're going to put those four, probably won't need to have any changes on those ones. And then one is a new.
New change.
A new change. So that's what we will do next time.
So just in theory, just so you all know, the, I've never seen this happen, but the goal is to have every policy have eyes on it at least every five years. So what, so it's saying, we made, what did we find? Four of them?
Yes.
Four of them that you will see for first reading have been adopted in the last two years. But we also said we're going to look at, you know, we're going to look at the eye, we'll look at the first 10 policies and eye. Four of them fit in that category of having been changed, modified in the last two years. So we really hope that you, that we list them that way, that you don't necessarily go through and scrutinize those. Those essentially go through as having been looked at by the policy committee, and they're good to go, put new data on them, and we won't have to put eyes on them again for five years. And if that sounds like a lot of time, just know that you'll be looking at some policies that haven't been looked at in over 30 years. So if we get anywhere remotely close to five years, we will be doing better than any school board I've ever seen in my life.
Okay. Negotiations.
We met with the support staff contract negotiating team today to set boundary rules and guidelines. And our meeting schedule for, we, it's kind of aggressive. We're hoping to be done before the end of March, if we can. And I think, you know, the next meeting that we have will be starting to bring our, our issues to the, to the table to see, you know, if we're in any agreement or if we need to, to work on that.
Excellent.
Also should report, we, we met as a team, three of us met last week.
We did. And we, we started to put together our list of things that we wanted to bring to the table. At our first next meeting, we will get their, their opinions as well. So if we put those together in a single document, we're trying to figure out where we want to go.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Good luck with everything.
Thank you.
Curriculum, we're going to be having a report by Megan in just a few minutes in regards to test scores. Administrators' reports, they were in our packet. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Joel?
I've got a question for Mike. We got into technology. And in your last sentence, you talk about moving from ADS to the Infinite Visions financial system. What's, what's the history of that or the recommendation for this? Because I went through an incredible amount of years on the ADS.
I don't, I don't know the backstory of it. Obviously, since I've only been here about a year and a half. But essentially, Tyler is retiring the ADS product. So Infinite Visions is the replacement of that. And it's not, has yet to be determined by Tyler what the end date, when they're going to force you off the ADS platform. But within, whether it's next year or the year after, it's something that we need to do as a district. And at this point, it's still somewhat proactive. But there's going to be a date and time where you are forced to do it. So I think getting ahead of the game is a better approach than waiting to the very end and being forced off of the platform.
And I think, timing-wise, it's very interesting that, did you know Brittany's voice is coming on, being shared with the town? So this is, I think, important for us to recognize what Mike just shared because Brittany's is not going to waste any time learning ADS. She's going to, she's already starting to learn what is available for Infinite Vision. It makes sense that she would be trained in that because that's where we're headed. So it's good timing. I'm glad we didn't waste her time training her on ADS, although she is learning a lot about it still because she has to. But her primary focus is on learning Infinite Vision.
So can I repair you correctly that ADS is forcing the closure of that program, and that's why they're moving?
They're discontinuing it.
They, they will eventually.
Okay.
So can I say differently? Tyler Industries is what, or Tyler Associates, whatever, they do ADS. And they're telling us they're no longer going to be doing ADS, and they're switching from ADS to Infinite Vision. So they're, they're changing programs.
The way that it works with software is basically they have a, you know, an end of development period, and then they'll have a end of life and a end of support. I forget right now what stage it's in, but eventually, it's going to be end of support. And I think right now, they're not doing any development. So there will be no new features other than bug fixes. So if something's broken, they'll fix it. There'll be nothing new. But at some point, it's going to be end of support. So if you can't get something in ADS to function, and you call them up for help, they're not going to help you because they want you off of that platform. And the other piece I'll add about that is as far as annual costs goes, over time, the annual cost for Infinite Visions is a less annual cost. The implementation phase is where the cost is associated with that project.
Joel?
Tyler Associates, they're not our auditors.
Tyler Technologies, they have an office in film.
Okay. So.
Yarmulke.
Have our auditors spoke into this? Because that was the real issue before was the auditing firm that we had was also uncomfortable with ADS, even though all the rest of the MVC schools were going in that direction. And I mean, I'm not telling you your business. I was just curious as to who was pushing it.
They haven't weighed, no, it's 100% as Mike said. And I've never heard anything from our auditors about concerns with ADS. And I'm not familiar with any schools. I've been with a lot of schools, and they've all, they all use ADS. They use Tyler. They're the industry standard as far as I'm concerned. And now they're taking themselves out.
Any other questions or comments about the administrators' report? I just had a couple. I was wondering if Mrs. Tyler would take a minute and tell me about the Rockin' Ramblers?
Oh. So I give staff an opportunity to nominate and recognize each other for, you know, just being awesome and being wonderful. So they, before every staff meeting, I put an email out and said, don't forget to nominate your Rockin' Ramblers. And so they just get a, I type up the, the comments that are made, and I present them at staff meetings. Like, you know, this month, Megan was one of them. And so I just, you know, your colleagues recognize that you go above and beyond. And, you know, it's just one of those things. It's, people like to hear good things, and it's coming from colleagues. So I think it's really meaningful, and I really enjoy doing it.
I like that.
Yeah.
Is that something that you instituted?
I guess so. Just seemed like a good idea.
I think it is a great idea. Nice to hear that from your peers. And then I also just wanted to acknowledge Tyler Shumway, who was recognized as the student of the month. And Vanessa Marzal was nominated by the student leadership as the teacher of the month or pro-monther. Yes. So I just wanted to congratulate them as well. Okay. Now we are ready for Megan White for her presentation about test scores.
Do we have to put this in the filter?
So that might be on right now. Oh. Am I turning this all on? Or it doesn't? It's off. It's on again. So it'll be a second. I'm sorry, guys.
It's coming back.
Why are you, do you want to move a little bit? I'm not even on that.
Actually, I think I'm over there.
That's weird. I don't have that. No, it was my screen, but it wasn't my screen now.
It's not there.
How does it work? It worked earlier. I was, I'm sorry. Okay.
So I'm pretty sure that most people that are present here know me. I'm Megan White. I'm the director of teaching and learning. And part of this, that was fun. Part of this role is taking a look at our assessment data. So I don't know if there's been longitudinal reports done prior to this position being created, but I decided to kind of take a deeper look at our NWEA data. Before we get started looking at it, for those who aren't aware of what the Before we get started looking at it, for those who aren't aware of what the NWEA or NWEA assessment is, it stands for Northwest Evaluation Association. They put together this assessment and we do the MAP suite of tests. So they look at measuring academic progress. And the word progress to me is really important in this because this assessment isn't just about achievement, it's about student growth, which I'll, I'll talk to a little bit. Here in district, we do math, reading and language use across most of the grade levels. We generally do it twice a year in the fall and in the spring. And we've extended that two times a year into the high school this year as part of a requirement, but also including ninth and 10th grader so we can continue to collect longitudinal data. The grade school has decided to do winter testing, so they'll be doing a third administration partway through. For those that don't know, this is an adaptive assessment, which means that as students are taking the NWEA tests, the questions will get easier or they will get harder based on how a student answers and if they answer correctly. So eventually, once they hit a certain amount of problems, the program itself has determined what level of knowledge these students are showing at this point in time. And, and another piece that's great is it can be tracked over time, so the scores are comparable from year to year. The scores can be based on achievement, so they use norm data. And the norm kind of benchmark that NWEA has set is at the 50th percentile. So the way percentiles work is that you have one to a hundred positions out of a hundred people. And so right halfway there would be where they've kind of set their benchmark. Again, because it focuses on academic progress, growth is a big piece of NWEA. So I wanted to make sure that we reported on that and talked about that a little bit too. The NWEA sets individual goals for students based on where their scores are and it's a projected growth score for that year. So that's pretty cool because it, it takes where a kid is. And it says maybe you're already in an accelerated program and your scores are really high. You might only have one or two points for growth that year. We might have students who are below where they would maybe be expected to be based on the norm data. They might have a more aggressive goal, growth goal. However, they wouldn't be expecting multiple years of progress in one year. So before we.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
About the goals? Is that something that the teachers look at?
No.
Do the kids know it?
It's, so the goal, the growth goals are developed by the program based on student data and their historical data. So the more we collect, the more accurate those growth goals that are calculated. They aren't necessarily communicated with students ahead of time, but it is something that the program does. We use it as a measure of progress for our ESA grants, so our Title I, two, four, or two, three and five are all based on that. Our goals are based on the growth.
Thank you.
Yeah. So as with any standardized assessment, I just want to reiterate, we all know this, but it is just one data point. We're fortunate that we have been using it from, since 2007, 2008. So we can look at trends, which is what we'll do tonight, to try to provide some context for what this data is. There has been a couple inconsistencies that have occurred. So consistently, it's been K eight historically. Ms. Randall and myself and Ms. Rodriguez this year decided that we were going to create a more consistent experience for our second graders. So prior to this year, if students had scored, I believe it's 190 in reading or 170 in math, they were moved into the two-five test versus the K two test, which created a really challenging position to track second grade because some students were taking one assessment, some were taking the other. So moving forward, we're going to move all second graders to the two-five to prevent inconsistencies there. Also, we have a cohort of students every year that are in an accelerated math program at the middle school level and they have not been taking the growth six plus test. So our accelerated kids aren't necessarily included in the data I'm going to present to you today. But as we shift to this being our new MEA test as of last year, those students will be included in that cohort data now too. They were taking like the algebra test or the geometry test, not the general six plus growth. And I know everyone on our board is, or our committee is aware, this is our new MEA assessment. So we're fortunate to already know a lot about the NWEA and have experience with it. It was mandated to be our MEA last spring because it had the ability to be remotely assessed and administered. And then they added fall to that. So now it is mandated both fall and spring for all three assessments for the main state educational assessments. The MDOE has not set a benchmark yet. Word on the street unofficial is that it will be the 60th percentile, so it will be above the norm. And that's based on just some preliminary numbers they've put out, but nothing official from the state yet. So potentially a benchmark around 60% is kind of the word on the street. So we'll take a look at last, or excuse me, this fall's data first. So this graph shows all three of the assessments and it shows grade level percentile. So if we take all the students in that grade level and we average their scores and then we look at where that falls on our percentile. So the dotted line here shows the 50th percentile dashed as 60th. It gives us an idea of kind of, you know, two through 11 where we fall. Our second graders, this is based on the two-five test. They're such a high percentile right now because those were our students who had tested really high prior to. And so it's really actually a very small cohort. So I took the second grade out of most of our other reports because it was a very small proportion of kids and it wasn't representative of the whole grade. One general trend from this is that I think, looking across at all of these red lines here, they are not up to the same percentile as our language and reading. So we, we do see some lagging in math specifically amongst the three tests. So percentiles are nice because it's an average of the grade, but what does that mean about amount of students? Because we do have students who struggle, we do have students that excel. So this is the percent of students that would meet that 60th percentile. So if the state did determine that the 60th percentile would be kind of our cutoff there, this is how many students in each grade, what percent of students would be reaching that. And again, here we see kind of that same little bit of a lag for math across all of the grade levels excluding, I think, third and 11th grade. At the high school level, I think that's kind of a cool celebration there. Ninth and 10th graders this fall tested very well in reading and language arts. So more than 60% of students in ninth and 10th grade would be meeting or exceeding that 60th percentile kind of cutoff. Pretty cool. So this is the growth projection. So this is looking at how many students would, this fall would have met their growth projection. In order to get a growth projection, you have to take both the fall and spring assessment. And so if they meet that, then, then they would be pictured here. So I wanted to do some longitudinal pieces in this so we can see, this is last year's data. So fall of 2020, spring of 21. We don't have a testing bar for 1920 because we weren't here in the spring. And so we have 1819 and 1718. And that's how far back I went into our NWEA data. Excuse me. So if we look at the percent of students that met their growth in math, it's right on with what it had been historically. So they're reaching the same amount of growth that they had pre-pandemic in mathematics. We're going to see a trend in 1819 when we look at the grade levels growth. That, that year was a successful year in reading and language, even in math, in some grades more so than others. But I think this shows us that our growth is right on par with where it had been in 1718. And I think that's a huge, huge accomplishment considering we were here for 80% in person. And that is more than what other districts were doing, but I think showing that our students have made such significant growth with only being here 80% of the time is, is pretty impressive. So looking more specifically at longitudinal data now. So that's kind of the pieces from this past fall and this year. I'm presenting data in three ways. So I have the longitudinal cohort scores, which is class of data. So we can track our current eighth grade all the way back from when they were in fifth grade, fourth grade, third grade. We have grade level data, which will be if you wanted to look at what does third grade normally have? And then we have our growth goal that we'll look at. So we'll start off with reading. We'll do reading, language and math. So again, our cohort pieces, this is looking at, we can say, maybe we'll take a look at the fifth grade. So this is the class of 2029 and we can see all the way back to when they took the reading assessment in second grade. The red line here is that norm score, which is the 50th percentile. And then the 60th percentile, I took a look at when that happened from 2020 and on. So we can start off by just really noticing in this that this fall, all of these three grade levels are above the norm, which is 50%, which is awesome. So they're starting already above where that norm data is. Last fall, if we take a look, we had some that were above the 60th percentile. So if we take a look here at fourth, coming back from having missed, you know, a couple of months of the school year, we had two grade levels that were pretty successful coming right back in last year. We were surprised by some of that data. Even though the fifth grade maybe didn't start out as strong, I want to point out that the growth that they had from here to here, so last fall to last spring is huge. I mean, that's 10 points. And then you can see now that they are, they've approached the norm and they're exceeding the norm and almost at the 60th percentile. So these historic graphs are set up a little different. So if we look at third grade, these are how many points above or below the norm the classes were because it's harder to see it as just a line in a bar graph here. So we can see the third grade historically has been, you know, two, two to six points above the norm. We had our spring off from COVID where we didn't get any testing data from that spring. And we can see that the fall data was also above the norm. So pretty consistent going into this fall. Fourth grade, we already saw that they, they had some struggles. This fourth grade class is fifth grade last year, right? If we're looking at the fall of 20 and 21, when we did our cohort graph here, it's representing these folks when they were in fourth grade. Just so you can kind of, you can even track this classes here. So again, operating now this fall above the norm in all of these grade levels. Our growth graph for three, four and five, this is the first time you kind of see that 1819, they had great growth that year across all of these grade levels. However, if you take a look at our 2021 bar, it's better in all three grades than 1718. So we had improved growth last year in the reading at the grade school. If we take a look at the middle school, we can see this fall, so our furthest bar over, all of these are above the norm also. And all of them have had some significant growth since they've returned. So even our, our current eighth grade that had started a little bit lower has had some nice growth since they came back last fall. Looking at their cohort data, again, we see that generally we traditionally had been above the norm in lots of these areas. But we start to see a trend here where we're approaching the norm. So we're still above that 50th percentile, which is a celebration, but we're not as far above it as we had been traditionally. So the thought would be that maybe this will start rebounding. That would be our hopes. If not, there's cause to start having some discussions around why we might be approaching the norm versus getting further away in a good direction. Looking at growth goals for reading for our middle schoolers, the percent of students that were meeting their growth goal, I'd say is pretty comparable to pre-pandemic if we take a look. So no huge deficits there. I do want to point out that even though we're making comparisons across years, I'm not super excited to say that half of our, less than half of our students are making adequate growth being that these are individualized goals put together with some pretty extensive norm data. It's, so that might be some cause for discussion also, even historically. The high school, it's, it's pretty similar trend across the high school where we had some great data coming back from, excuse me, when we returned to school, fall of 2020, operating above. One thing you might have noticed over here in our current 11th graders, phenomenal reading scores last spring, like crazy good scores compared to the norm data. But this fall, it's, that's a huge dip. So I kind of dug into that a little bit. And this fall, 16 out of the 50 students who had taken it, that's 32% spent less than 32, 30 minutes on this assignment. And this test requires a lot of reading. So when you get to the point where students aren't spending or engaging with the assessment for the suggested hour, I think that there's a relationship there. The spring, so the same cohort of kiddos, last spring when they took it, there was three out of 45 who spent last, less than 30 minutes. That was only 7% of the kids. So I think even though we can't say it's causation, we can say there's probably a pretty strong relationship between the time spent.
Is it also possible that maybe they ran out of time for that test? Or they felt, I feel like I remember my daughter saying that she was taking her time and she was worried she wasn't, she was going to run out of time before she finished.
So one thing, and that's a great question, there is no timeline on these NWEA tests.
Well, there isn't.
And because it is computer-based, it tracks when a student starts it because they have to log in and when they get to their last question. So students may have felt that, that need to, to rush internally, but we did set up follow-up sessions, proctor sessions, where I actually sat with kids to complete them or for students who were absent. So that might be a good, that's good advice that as we go into our spring session, to be really thoughtful about communicating that there's no time constraint. And encouraging students, I think, to, to use that time. Like, you're going to be here anyways.
Yeah.
Please use that time. 16 students is a lot.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Yeah. So in summary, reading generally is trending over time a little bit more towards the norm. So that's good if we were below the norm, but being that we had started above the norm, that we're trending that way is, is something we'll want to keep our eye on. Some celebrations, last fall, 33% of the cohorts were below, but now they're above the 50th percentile. Grades three through 10, their mean scores are above the norm, all of them this fall. And 67% of them are above the 60th percentile. So 67% of our grades, not our students, here and went through, would have been above that benchmark had that been the benchmark the state set. The growth goals are comparable to pre-pandemic data. However, I kind of mentioned it before that half of the students, I, I'm not sure how I feel about that, but that is how it is. Half the students are meeting their growth goals in reading. And in 18 and 19, for, for whatever reason, there was pretty significant increase, increased growth in three through fifth. So maybe kind of having some discussions around what work was being done at that point.
Thanks. Before you move on, can we go back to the cohort reading nine through 11 real quick?
Yeah.
How, how there's a fall 20 for the ninth grade, but not for the 10th or 11th? Just because they didn't do us a fall?
Yep. So the DOE requirement only really started in the spring and with the transition back in the fall, although we had kind of worked out how to do it remotely, it wasn't something we had decided to incorporate into the high school.
Thank you.
Yep. Great question. So we'll take a look at the language test. This test is not given out until third grade, I believe, at the grade school. I don't believe our second graders started and it's, it's a two 12 test. So that's why our third grade has one bar, because it's not something that they take in second grade. And this year, our third grade was a little bit below the norm and the 60th percentile. But we can see again that this fall, we, we had both of our fourth and fifth that were, you know, achieving above. I do want to point out that being below and above, we'll see it a little bit more in this one, has happened prior to the pandemic. So you can see 1819 here. There, there were times where we were just near approaching that. And sometimes you see that a little bit better when we look at what class of this was. So that might give us some insight into that, that piece right there. One second. Let's get the page. Sorry about that. It's messed up all of my modem now. I'm sorry. I'll get it back. I just have to throw out there that I messed it up and I'll be dead. Yeah, so we see that, let's see, in this one, that, or 50%, we had some students here that, in that fifth grade class that were, you know, below the 60th percentile here. But I do want to point out again, this fifth grade class has made huge gains. We saw it in reading, we see it again in language, that this is where they came back post-pandemic. And now they're, they've made some really large strides. So they went from being below both of these to above the 60th percentile now. That's huge. Kudos to that group of teachers that have worked with them and kudos to those kids for working so hard. So here, you can see that that low third grade language piece is not normal necessarily for the trend that we've seen there. We can see again, there's been some highs and lows pre-pandemic too. If we look at the growth for our language at our grade school, it's, I'd say it's pretty comparable again to our pre-pandemic data. We have that 1819 year that in the fourth grade is just, has been really, really strong. But I think that if we kind of took that out of it, we can see that it's pretty consistent across pre-pandemic data as far as what our students' growth is. Or the percent of students meeting their growth goal. In the middle school, our sixth, seventh are above the norm for both our pre and post tests here, which is awesome. So we're looking even from last fall in our sixth and seventh graders. The eighth cohort, if you look at their longitudinal data, they've actually struggled several times. So when we saw, if I go back just a little bit, some of these pieces being lower, some of that is this current eighth grade cohort. So I kind of mapped through to see that. And we see it a little bit more strongly in math when we look at their, their class specifically. Which is why cohort studies are so important, is to take a look at that group of kids and we can talk about how to support that group, but also why are these things happening? So our historic pieces, sixth grade and language generally above. We see the same though, this trend kind of towards the norm in some of these classes where we might have had some consistence above. And then it's getting closer to the norm, maybe it's going to recoup, but we do see some clustering towards that. The growth here, I think, is the first time that we really see in middle school or in any of the growth graphs where our post-pandemic data is, I would say, not mathematically significant, but significantly lower than our pre-pandemic data. And it's specifically around this language test. So that might take some discussion at the middle school again with, with the content area around why that's happening. We might be able to see this spring that it bounces back and it's, it's different. So why was there not as many students growing would be the question in this, that this graph would pose. Because the language test was not a requirement last year, I really only have one assessment. And this year, at the high school, they all achieved above the, the norm data. So in summary, language, traditionally, we've been above the national norm in every term. It's been a strength at Winthrop, I think. Each class of cohort improved from last fall to this fall pretty significantly. The percent of third to fifth grade students meeting their growth goal is comparable. However, we did see kind of a downward trend for our middle school students. You guys are sticking with me. We're on to math. Can you tell I like this stuff? I really do like this stuff. Okay, it's not about me. All right, rewind.
Thank you for doing this.
Yeah. So we're taking a look here, we're going to start looking at math. That anomaly I talked to you a little bit about earlier, where we had some second grade students who would maybe take a different assessment, not the 25, the K2. We ended up only having like, not many students in second grade last year who took this test. I think that if I showed it, it wouldn't have been representative enough, so I, I kept that second grade right out of that. Third grade ones. So we can see that this cohort, we don't have their information from when they were in second, but this year they were above the 50th, right below the 60th. And fourth and fifth grade, holy moly growth, I just, I can't even, I don't know, I just, I get so proud. These folks were below, they're approaching there, and then now they're meeting and, and starting to exceed. And just the growth is great to see as far as the RIT scores. Looking at the historic data for third, fourth, and fifth in mathematics, this is where we start to see some patterns that happen. So it appears to be generally pre-pandemic, we were above in third, we've been approaching it more so post-pandemic. In fourth grade, we were a little bit above, we still had a funky year. I will tell you right now, 17, 18, and then look at here, it's going to be 18, 19, this is the same group of kids. When they were in fourth grade, 17, 18, then they were in fifth grade, 18, 19. Then you'll see them use, this is that eighth grade cohort right now. So some above, some below, but definitely approaching, you can see here, in fifth grade, we're approaching the norm and we're not always consistently above. The growth here though, I mean, I don't know, it's comparable and if not, I mean, fourth grade, look at the growth that they had last year in mathematics. I think that is, is phenomenal. And being on par in third grade and then in fifth grade, I mean, they, they're on par with all that pre-pandemic growth that we had in math. And this, this graph also has more than half of our students in two separate grades meeting their growth goal. And so that is something I mentioned earlier when we were talking about reading, having less than half our students meeting their growth goal kind of is something I, I want to look more into. Seeing that these are higher than that is great. It means some real headway was made last year. So we're into middle school math. And this is where we start to see that, that there might be areas to work on or to look closer at, at the middle school level. So the scores that we see for these kids, several of them are below, they started below post-pandemic. Several of them have come up to that norm data and then, and then sometimes dropped too. And we can see some historical data, which helps us learn about, like we saw this when they were in fifth grade, right, in sixth grade? This group, this cohort. But we're also seeing that pattern of being below the norm continue. So what we're, whatever we're trying to do for these kids, we need to think a little bit more creatively, potentially for that cohort. So this is where we see kind of a shift in the points above or below the norm. So it stops, stops kind of clustering right at it and it starts being a shift even pre-pandemic below the norm. So we're at below the 50th percentile, really looking kind of historically at seventh. It's nice to see, boom, they hopped right back up here, but it, it is something that existed prior to the pandemic. The growth at the middle school level comparable to pre-pandemic, but this is still something that, that warrants a conversation. You know, less than 25% of students meeting their, their growth in 18, 19. What, what is it that we need to look at there? Is it technique? Is it curriculum? You know, looking at our current year's data, is it COVID? Looking at the high school, we can see all high school cohorts were above the 60th percentile this fall. So some pretty awesome data this fall and a lot of growth. So I think even if you look, you know, at our 10th graders, we have lots of times where these current 10th graders were below. And then high school, they're starting to catch up. If we look at our current 11th grade, we have many times where they were below that norm data, right? And then boom, we see them catch up. And, and this is the end of their eighth grade year and the beginning of their ninth grade year, and this is our 11th graders. And we see that trend, the end of the eighth grade, beginning of ninth grade. Well, we can't see the end of eighth grade here, but we can see the fall of eighth grade and the spring of their ninth grade. So whether it's maturity, curriculum, there's a lot of data around middle school students. But, but they kind of make some ground back up in the high school. So the general trend in math is that fifth, sixth grade, we start approaching the norm aggressively. We're below a bit pretty consistently in some of the eighth grade. We get right back up to that norm level ninth and then we start getting above when we go to the 10th and 11th grade. We haven't traditionally tested those high school students, so I'll be interested to see if that trend continues. The fall of 2021, the ninth through 11th mean RIT scores were all over the 60th percentile, which is a huge celebration. Grade level historical data, we had some similar patterns to pre-pandemic. And third through fifth, it, they were a little bit more approaching the norm than they were pre-pandemic. Lastly, our growth in math was higher than normal, but still, oops, sorry. Less than half the students 5'8" are meeting their growth goals. So if we're talking about individualized growth for students, less than half of them are making that progress. So now that I've kind of spent some time with this, we already started talking about it briefly in our administrative team today. My thoughts would be building leadership from here, could review grade and teacher level data, which I know many of them already do. And maybe provide teachers with opportunities for some collaborative discussion. So is this COVID? Is it something that is being covered, but maybe it's not being covered successfully? So can we talk about technique? Is there something that we need to look closer at in the curriculum? Both strengths and weaknesses. Working with our CIS teachers that we hired this year to utilize this data to help support students who have been most impacted by COVID, to make those growth gains and then track that growth. A continued focus on essential standards and skills, and this is, I'm going to do a shout out to Ms. Randall right now. Last fall, she asked all of her grade school teachers to look at their final in, in October essentially, and decide which of those standards were essential. And, and, and that activity, I think, is part of why her math scores specifically were reasonably strong. And her growth in some of those areas was pretty strong because teachers prioritized learning and they had a collaborative discussion about it. And so continuing to focus on those essential standards and skills, really make sure to, that students have a strong foundation in that, I think would continue to make a positive impact, especially in math. And then using individual data to have teachers use it to inform class supports, instruction, pacing maybe, as well as interventions, and if staff need training, they need training on how could they access this in a way that's going to be meaningful in their context? And I'm happy to provide that to them. So that's, that's a pretty long story of our NWEA data. I think, you know, kind of, if we're thinking about generally where are we now versus pre-pandemic, I feel like it's very similar, which is great. But I think that that means we still have work to do. So thank you guys for your time tonight. And I'm happy to take any questions that you might have, or if you need to digest a little bit, you can feel free to reach out later too. I know it was a lot.
Thank you so much. This is excellent.
I guess I do have just one question. Right now, are the teachers getting their students' individual growth goals once the tests are done so that they can try to help individually drive their learning?
Yep, so another awesome thing about NWEA, I feel like I should sell their product, is that the student test data is available within 24 hours.
Oh, wow.
But teachers might not know how to access growth goals. And we had had a discussion even in our ESA planning group around, do you tell a student what their growth goal is if you, if they don't meet that growth goal? Like, like where is the balance with our youngest learners on, this is where, how much it says you can do, what do you think? Does that number, is that meaningful to them? So how can we incorporate that in a way that can promote a class celebration maybe? And maybe individual, maybe not individual. The growth piece, I don't think is, is 100% utilized as it could be in the classroom. But I know that teachers regularly understand the, the RIT score, which is the mean 50th percentile norm. And they use that to help identify kind of which students might need more help. But even from there, like there's so much detailed reports that you can get into there, it really is a rabbit hole of skills that you could work on and it's by student.
Okay, good.
Yep.
And when will you do this again?
Do, you want, you want, you can do, we can do. Well, so the longitudinal piece will go quicker, right, because it will be familiar feeling. I'd be happy to do it after any of our required test sessions if you'd like.
I'm sorry, I thought you meant when will we do the NWEAs again? You meant when will Megan come back?
Right. Well, the next testing for NWEAs will be a winter session if the grade school decides to, it's an optional session. And then our requirement through the state is that our third through eight and our third year of high school students have to take it this spring.
Gotcha, okay. I was just wondering. Thank you so much. That is really informative. Okay, we'll move on to own business, revisit the return to school protocol.
I'm, I'm not trying to short circuit the conversation, but I think based on what I shared with you earlier, I don't know what, I think we have some news that we're waiting to hear and I don't know how we do anything different. We're, we, we wait from winter break anyway and then we're expecting some new news from CDC, so not sure what we should do.
I, I just have a, I guess a quick question in regards to what we found out from Joel as far as what's going on with the sports over the break.
Yeah.
I, I don't even know how to begin to answer that question. The, it was a, during Thanksgiving break, there were a couple of schools, including Scotty, of all places, I'm not blaming us on Timmy though. They were concerned that they did not do testing over, pool testing over that Thanksgiving break. And people were just concerned about what that meant for, for people who were pool testing to not have to do it. And the DOE just said they had not thought about that and so they didn't do anything. So they asked them to give it some thought about during Christmas break, which are holiday break, which is a longer break. And ultimately, they decided they were not going to do anything about it. So the, maybe that's factoring in what this, maybe they didn't think about it because they, they actually did think about it and said, they knew they were kind of looking at doing something different. But the, what it says to me is they're relying on parents to essentially tell us that if their kid is positive, they're going to let us know. That if, if they are not, I hate to say it, sounds really horrible to say it this way, but it's almost like a no news is good news type of thing. No news is good enough. So I don't think it puts us, puts us in the same boat as every other school. The DOEs aren't requiring it and I'm not aware of any school that is doing it. They did talk about possibly nurses working, but that, that's absurd.
So what I'm hearing is that people go on with sports as scheduled without any.
Correct.
Were you able to talk to Joel about the other side of the players being pulled out at games?
I didn't, but like I, I, I did talk to him about this specifically, but I, my understanding is that is what they're going to do. Oh, we have a game tonight?
There is a game tonight, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, but no, I did not.
Okay, thank you.
Do we know how many kids at the grade school got vaccinated?
Through the thing that we did, it was about 86 grade schoolers. And then there were various clinics throughout the area and so I think our number is like 120.
The grade school vaccinated?
Yeah.
185, I believe Melissa told us.
Really?
That's awesome.
So that's another 100 plus beyond what we did at our.
How, how many kids are in the grade school?
Uh, not quite, 420, 400, a little over 400.
So we're almost.
Almost halfway. That's really great news. I thought, I thought the last numbers I had heard was like 125, 85 or so from us.
I'm going to, I'm going to look right now and tell you.
At 40, 40 through area.
Curious to see if that's going to make a difference.
Yeah.
I don't think it will.
But I, I guess my, I, this is the appropriate place to talk about this, but I'm, I'm not looking in. I don't hear anybody suggesting we do something different than what we're currently doing at this point.
I'm wondering if you should address that parent email that we received today about the SOP.
Yeah, that's what I talked about earlier. I don't mind repeating it, but basically, I, and try to answer the question, we are following the SOP. I don't know why the person thought we weren't, that's okay, it's irrelevant. But it did come to all of you today from the, from the person who brought it up before. We are following the SOP. When I asked Melissa specifically about it, she said, and I sent this out to you all in an email and I replied to this parent, this same thing today. Basically, when we have a student who's identified as positive, we go back, first thing we take a look at is who are the students who are sitting around them? In all cases, almost 100% of the time, those kids that are sitting around them are, are wearing masks because that's what we require, universal masking. So I think it was a feeling that we weren't following that protocol and we were identifying them as close contacts and saying they have to quarantine. Melissa said that's almost never the case. What's more likely to be the case is if they're sitting next to each other in class, it means they're probably friends, we can be like them or, you know, whatever. They're, they're in class together, they're close to each other. They, the same group goes to lunch together and they don't wear their mask at lunch. So they are then close contacts at lunch. And then they go to recess together and they play together for more than 15 minutes. So in almost 100% of the cases, according to Melissa, they are identified as close contacts because of the time that they are together outside the classroom unmasked. So we are, when I first, when I asked both Chini and, and Melissa about that, they both looked at me and they gave me a different answer. And I was like, now I went back and said, so you're telling me that when, you know, if they're within three feet of each other or outside of three feet in the class and they're wearing their mask, that we, we didn't identify them as close contacts and have to quarantine? They're like, no. I'm like, that's what you told me. So well, we, because we didn't, we didn't understand the question, so okay, I don't know. So no, we've, we've done that, we've done that from the beginning.
I think the confusion was on my part because when that parent initially contacted me, my answer to them was, we're, we're not going to loosen anything. I don't think that there's an appetite on the school board to loosen anything that we're already doing. So if you feel like we're not doing that, I don't think you could get the majority of us to agree to loosen what's already happening. So I think that that's where that, and I suspect that that parents, school district, where they were maybe interpreting that rule differently.
I don't think so. I think ultimately, when I, and I got a nice, several of you responded today. And I got an email back and basically. And I got an email back and basically thanked us for that. I think that is a clarification on the fact that we are doing it. For whatever reason, they didn't think we were doing it, and it gets clarified.
Jim, you were, you were correct. It must have been one hundred and fifty, but we're at one thirty that are vaccinated. I just asked.
One thirty, not one eighty-five?
One thirty.
Well, we had eighty-five or eighty-six that we did here at school. And then there's, there's an ongoing clinic, in case any of you don't know. There's an ongoing clinic at the address to Amri. And that's going to go at least till the end of the month, if not sooner. And then, of course, we have our, our traveling vaccination person, Amelia. I would say that jokingly, obviously, but she was at our, she came into my office tonight to give up, to give boosters to my entire central office staff. And she, and she will do that. Yeah, she's awesome.
Are there any questions or comments from anybody on Sue with regards to revisiting the protocol?
I'd say no.
No? Okay, thank you. So we can move on to new business, where we can recognize Ms. Jana Dykett as our outgoing school committee member. We have several things.
Oh, great.
Let the embarrassment begin. Yes, let the embarrassment begin. I, I'd like to start with the school committee members, if you have anything you would. Whoop.
Melissa Brewer said she'd like to speak.
Melissa Brewer would like to speak. Oh, in regards to Jana or the protocol?
I'm not sure. I said it was like right in between.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Melissa.
Hi, sorry.
No, no problem.
Um, just quickly, because Jana is very, way more important, so this will be quick, I promise. So I just want to reiterate, first of all, like, I, I think it's, you guys are doing an awesome job. And I want you to know, like, we're all in this together. And it's, I appreciate when other parents or community members, like, ask us questions. I always thank them, like, you know, because it's important to know, you know, we are not, we are not putting people in quarantine if they don't need to be in quarantine. I, I can assure you that Jolene and I and, and Debbie sit down and we literally look at, okay, here's the close contacts, are they pool testing? That's all we're looking at right now, are they pool testing? And after the new year, after Christmas break, we will have fully vaccinated, which is awesome. And it is, yes, it's a hundred and thirty. We did, we did close to over, I think it was over ninety, because we got some first shots in the second clinic, just so you know. And I can get those numbers for you. I'm happy to share. I just don't have them on the top of my head right now. And we have many that caught elsewhere, obviously. So, but I, I want you to know, we, we don't just quarantine a whole bus. We don't quarantine a whole classroom. We don't quarantine a whole cafeteria like we did last year. And I'm going to just reiterate, we had a, a positive fourth grader. It was a week and a half ago or so. And when we looked at, when Jolene looked at the list, we found out on Monday evening, she, she gave me, you know, she looked at the cafeteria, she looked at the classroom, she, we, we looked to see, you know, recess, all of that. And it ended up being only one person, one student, that needed to quarantine because of pool testing. One. I mean, so that, to me, is huge, huge difference. And when parents or others question, that's, that's valid, and I, I can understand it being a parent myself. But we, we don't just jump to, you know, quarantine. We don't, like, I, because I get it. My children have been just recently impacted again. My daughter is still in her ninety day window, but my son did not go to three hockey games because he was in community quarantine. And to be honest, I almost forgot he was in quarantine because he could, could go to school. And he obviously is pool testing. So, you know, and it, I just, I just want to reiterate that, that, you know, I, I don't know. It's, it's kind of frustrating when people are really, you know, digging deep and, and trying to find, I'm not sure why, because how would they even know if they're outsiders when we're quarantining what we're doing? Because when they ask me, I tell them, you know, you're a close contact within this six feet or, you know, close contact from recess or learning lab or speech. Or, you know, we don't, we just, and I just want you guys to know, I mean, we, we are, we are in, we're getting, we're getting there, you know, with the increased vaccination and pool testing and all of that. So I just want to help this field anyway. So thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Melissa.
Yes.
I just said, I just said, thank you. Oh, do you want to speak about Jana at all, or? Well, we got you. Okay. We know she loves you. All right, so I would like to start with any school committee members who would like to say anything to Jana. And then I have a few comments from other folks from Winthrop Public Schools that I will read once we, and then we will get on to the good stuff, which is the gifts. Go ahead, Ken. I think the only thing that I would really like to say, and I put it in writing today before, but I really want to thank you for mentoring me through this process. And I'm, I'm going to miss having you here to help with that a lot. You are taking a large amount of knowledge with you when you leave, and it's, it's, we will notice it.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Timothy. Yeah, I know, I wrote mine too.
And this is, I, I always respect your opinion, and I actually always do listen to what you have to say to formulate my own thoughts.
Oh, thank you.
And I said, do I listen to you? And I appreciate having another teacher on the committee. Again, I think we actually know what's going on in the trenches.
Yeah.
And thank you for your time on the committee. And yeah, I think, no, I'm just going to be missed.
Thank you.
All right, I just like to just say a couple of words, but I think this community, I mean, is very sincerely, very elected to have you.
Thank you.
It's not just you, but it's also the rest of the family. I mean, how many communities do you live in? Do you have people that water their way and be supported? To the people that talk about good things about their community, who will serve as ambassadors to those that pass by? But just little things, like whether it's the videoing, the parades that go by, or the championship team that can rise back, or being up there for the different games all over the place, after spending a long day out there in Windsor and coming back, and away you go. But you are a unique individual, and I really mean that very sincerely. Because communities need people like you that have got the roots, that can keep the tie-ins going. And can encourage newcomers to get involved. And so, has it been six years ago?
Six years.
Six years. It is, it is a reasonably a long time, and I'm sure you're going to remember fighting with me on a lot of things. But that's not the point. The point is, you, you brought up things, and I learned from them, and that's extremely important. But I recognize you as something, being a very good community resource and the roots of this community. But you're proud of it.
Thank you.
All right, so Jana, you are one of the main reasons why I even ever decided to join the school committee. I'll never forget when I was a concerned parent, sitting and out there and stood in front of the school committee to talk about my concern. And I was really nervous, and I figured probably my concern was probably not shared by a lot of the people on the school committee. And I just remember, you heard me. You offered all kinds of advice and thoughtful recommendations, and had lots of really great ideas that just, just for me as a, as a parent and what I could do so I could raise my child the way I wanted to. You just really cared, and I felt respected and listened to. And I thought, I could be on a committee with people like Jana on here.
Thank you.
And so that was several years ago now. And you have carried on, because that's just who you are. You're a very genuine, caring person. And like Joe, you're such an amazing part of this community. And I'm going to really miss you. But I would say that you're Winthrop's biggest cheerleader. And I look forward to seeing you do that more, just not so soon.
Thank you.
So I want to add as well that I want to thank you. I'm, I'm all done being angry. So it, it's been great. And I'm going to actually say a little more about this probably in the next session. But I just, you know, your contributions to the community go way beyond that of the school committee. I, I've had a chance to read some of the things that are going to be shared, so I won't try to spill those beans. But I think this, the sort of why you decided to get involved is, is speaks volumes about you as the person that you are. Your commitment to the community has, has been amazing, and the work that you do outside of your work as a school committee member. And honestly, that's what makes me, I almost feel like I'm not really, I'm being selfish. I'm not going to lose you as a member of the school committee. Because I know you're going to, it's not like you're going to run off in the sunset. You're going to continue to be very involved. And, you know, I, I mean, it's kind of a little thing that you did, and may not mean, you may not have thought of that much, but it just, to me, it just says who you are about. When we were talking about if we have to deliver meals, and you said, I'll do that even when I'm not on the school committee, if you need somebody to do that, I'll do that. I said, that's Jana. So, yeah, thank you. I'm going to miss you here, but I, I know you're going to be around, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Emily.
I've learned so much from you personally, and I really, really admire your work ethic and your dedication, but also on behalf of all the students, we know that everything you do is for the students. And we really appreciate how you've involved you all in the community. And I, I know I will still see you around everywhere, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I have just a few comments here I'm going to read.
Josh, you wanted, were you just raising your hand?
No.
Okay.
Okay, from Colleen. I hold you in the highest regard. You are dedicated, trustworthy, and hardworking. Your countless hours of work have greatly benefited the community, students, and the entire Winthrop School District. You will be missed. Thank you for your service. From Stacy Born. Jana, thank you for your hard work and dedication to the students and families of Winthrop. Your commitment has made a difference. Your service is appreciated. From Dorian Edlin. Thank you, Jana, for your time, dedication, and service to the Winthrop School Community. Wishing you all the best in whatever you might choose next. Kristy Grant. Jana, thank you, doesn't seem like nearly big enough words to say how much we appreciate your hard work, energy, and dedication to education in our community. We appreciate you. From Lori Foster. Thank you, Jana, for your service to our school community. Your desire to look at all aspects of a situation before making a decision has been invaluable. From Todd MacArthur. You are a true Winthropian that bleeds green, white, and gray with a smiley.
No way.
Your contributions to our school community and kids cannot be covered in a simple thank you. We are forever grateful for your service, and Winthrop Public Schools have been a better place with you on the school board. Thank you for your service. From Jody Laterno. I appreciate all the time and effort you put in while on the school committee, including all the time outside of the regular meetings. Whether it is hours spent doing warrants, special subcommittee work, and attending town council meetings. You have the perspective as a classroom teacher that is important in that position. You ran for school committee because you cared about the education of all the students in Winthrop, and they have definitely benefited from your time in office. Thank you. From Joe Burnham. Thank you so much for your time, effort, and compassion. Your contributions to the town of Winthrop have allowed this school district and community to thrive. You will be missed. Consider this a small thank you for what has often been thankless job. From Amanda Boyce. Thank you for all your years of time and service. You are a very approachable member of the school committee, and we appreciate all that you have done to support us. From Sarah Hubert. I am glad that we spent a year teaching together in Windsor. You shared an email with me about the Masters in Ed Leadership Program at U of M, which led me to so many wonderful opportunities, one being the school counselor at Winthrop High School. Your positivity, thoughtfulness, and caring passion for education goes farther than you know. Just two more. From Kate LeVette. Jana, thank you so much for your service and dedication to this community. You have served the students, staff, and parents well, especially during some of our toughest years. You are approachable, ethical, and compassionate. Thank you for putting in the very hard and necessary work. And lastly, from Jody Caprera. Your dedication, enthusiasm, and insight is unmatchable. Thank you for all you have done for our kids, our staff, and our community.
Thank you.
So now, here is your plaque, your service.
Thank you.
You are welcome. And then we have some gifts from us from the school committee. First of all, because.
I want flowers.
You're always giving somebody else flowers. Now you get to receive them for a change. These are just some good pieces. And then this is the big one.
Will I open this now?
Yeah, please.
Okay. And then I have something to say after. This is a big one?
A big one. So there's a little birdie who might have.
Oh, thank you.
Mentioned that you've always wanted to have a dogwood tree.
Yes.
Can you hold that up again?
So.
I'm smiling, Chris.
All right. There you go.
Thank you.
So now you can get one.
Awesome. Thank you. Nice. Good.
And our thought was that as you watch your tree grow and thrive over the years, it can remind you of how the Winthrop Public School system grew and thrived while you were.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So I had to write something down because I couldn't do this off the top.
Yeah.
So, I'm going to take this down for a second. So thank you. These past six years have certainly been interesting in the Winthrop Public Schools. I'd like to start by saying thank you to Gary Rosenthal, who actually was the one that approached me to join the school committee. And Jenny Guyer and Kristen Schumway, who were my mentors on this. And I learned more than I ever thought possible, so thank you to them. Thank you to Dr. Brown, who stepped in when our school department really needed it. I also learned a bunch from her. She's a wealth of knowledge. And thank you to our current superintendent, Jim, who I'm going to miss a lot. I, you, I have learned so much from you, and I know even in my own district, when I have questions, I often, you know, bug you about them because I see you more than I see my own superintendent. So thank you. Thank you for guiding me, and I probably still will be calling you. So keep that in mind. And thank you to Sue for stepping in. There's not a lot of people who go after this position, so oftentimes, it's us recruiting people. So I really appreciate you stepping up and stepping into the role as chair. Thank you to Joe, who has been on this committee and brings so much knowledge to all of us. And having someone with that thread who's been through a lot of Winthrop history is so helpful to know things in the past that's happened on here. Because it's very intimidating when you first come on this board, not knowing procedures and policies and how to do stuff and what to do and what not to do. And Joe, you were always awesome with letting me know or helping me or guiding me, so I appreciate that. And Kelly and Tim, thank you for coming on this board and really giving it your all. And I'm super excited for the future of this board as well. I am going to miss some things, but I'm not going to miss a lot. I also really want to thank Jim just for navigating Winthrop through COVID. These are really unprecedented times, and I just feel like you have done such an incredible job with caring about our staff, because without our staff, our students would not be here. And we're here, and, and that is what's so important. So thank you for all of your work and your continued work with that. After surviving my first term on the board, I said I was not going to run again. But I was so encouraged with the fact that we were just on this upswing, and I, I hope we continue on that upswing, because I really feel that this school district is, is just a, a great place to be and learn and work. I'm thankful for all I've learned being on this side of the fence, and I would encourage. I'm thankful for all I've learned being on this side of the fence, and I would encourage all of you working in education, if you don't work in the town that you live in, to get involved in your school boards. You are a wealth of knowledge to them and to the students that attend those schools. And you will learn a lot. You learn a lot about things that can change and things that can't, and that's really important, being a teacher, in my opinion. And lastly, I'd like to thank the staff at Winthrop. This town is so lucky to have you all as dedicated employees. I started my career here and grew up here with a lot of teachers when I worked here that I just admired and respected. It's the reason why I got into education, because you were my mentors. So you're, we just know that your heart and your soul and your commitment to children is beyond appreciated. Thank you to the students of Winthrop. I think it's incredible that we have kids on our school committee, and that it's so well represented. It's well represented on this end with what you guys bring to us, and I know that you're bringing stuff back to the students. And that's huge. The communication is key. You're our future leaders. Take the opportunities before you to advance your education. And when you get older, hopefully you will give back to your community. Ollie's already in, Caroline, Kenna, and Josh, and Joshua. Oh, it's Huff and, I can't remember his last name. Huffburg?
Yeah.
Okay. It's just been a pleasure working with kids, because I love doing that anyway. Also, just everyone, keep me updated. I do do the Winthrop Community Happenings page. I am more than happy to continue to be that cheerleader. I love this town. I love this school district. And I will support you in anything that you need supported. So thank you.
And thank you, Jana, so, so much. And you will truly, truly be missed.
And thank you for those who took the time to write that. I'll process that later.
So next on the agenda is, I will entertain a motion to approve the committee's recommendation for dedicating the basketball court in the Winthrop High School Gymnasium.
So moved?
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion.
So if you don't mind passing these down. Yep, that's all. One packet. I think I know them enough, maybe not, so we're gonna have to share.
I can share. My picture.
All right, we'll share. And then you can have my copy. I will make sure that I forward this to you, to you, Jim, and to Colleen as well. But a few months ago, Joe Burnham, is Joe on Zoom? Joe Burnham?
I'm probably.
Okay. Joe Burnham had written a letter to Superintendent Bajkin to ask that the gym floor at the Winthrop High School be named after Ray Convery, who is in presence tonight. Thank you for coming. So once that happens, Jim forms, or asks a school board member to form a committee. And I volunteered or was asked to, sort of a vote thing, to be on the committee. And then on the committee also was, for school staff, I had Ian Blanchard, who was a middle school teacher. He also attended Winthrop Public Schools and grew up in Winthrop. Darren Hesey as my school parent. He has a child in high school, a child in middle school, one that graduated from Winthrop. Darren also attended Winthrop and owns a business here in town. For a school student, I had Maddie Perkins. She was a high school senior who knows Mr. Convery as both a teacher and as a coach. And for my community member, I had Lieutenant Peter Struck, who actually might be interim chief. I don't know what title's the best there, who was our local Winthrop Police Officer as a community member. He also grew up in Winthrop Public Schools and had Mr. Convery as a teacher. So I'd just like to sort of highlight some of the reasons why Joe chose to dedicate Mr. Convery and some of his accolades, as to why we as a committee do believe that this court should be named the Ray Convery Court. So Mr. Convery has had 30-plus years of teaching at the Winthrop Grade School, from the late 70s to the early 2000s, teaching PE in grades K through five or pre-K through five towards the end, shaping many students through his kind demeanor, humor, compassion, and respect. Most impressive, though, was his, is his connections to the students and the players that have lasted decades. He has also coached girls' basketball for over 30 years, ending with volunteering back in the program as well. He's had over 365 career victories on the court, landing him in the top 50 all-time coaches in the state of Maine. Six conference titles, five regional titles, and a state championship in the 89-9 this season. He holds his teams to a high level of athleticism as well as sportsmanship, which has also earned him eight sportsmanship awards during his time as a coach. And then as a side note, we also have a Ray Convery Sportsmanship Award that we award to seniors for the past eight years. Sorry, I thought I had that mentioned on here. I'm sorry about that. It has been said that he is the reason for our girls' basketball team's positive reputation, not only in our conference and in Central Maine. He has set the bar through his leadership and coaching style. He has coached many girls in softball as well, making those lifelong connections and teaching lifelong lessons to so many Winthrop alumni. When Mr. Convery came back to volunteer coaching at the girls varsity basketball team, there was a line at the Gus Pacific Center to give him a hug, a hello, a welcome back, or just to check in with him after all these years from former players and students. In order to improve his own health, he had started walking around town, inspiring others by example. Community members saw this, and several children ended up joining him and walking around town with him, again, just showing how much of a presence he has and how much kids really look up to him. In our committee meeting, many of us spoke with the fond memories of the grade school from PE in the pit, which we all had except for Maddie. In the old Adele Building, our gymnastics units with the trampoline, the ball, and the balance beam, our capture the flag games, dodgeball, and the many games that he played in and around with our parachute. Those all, we just got a big laugh out of all of those. So thank you. Many of these have also shared these memories if they have been in Mr. Conver's classes. In addition to teaching and coaching in Winthrop, Ray and his wife Donna have also raised two children in this community as well. I have two letters from Joe, the initial letter, and then just another one that highlighted, again, raised accolades to the organization also of youth basketball, intermarials, and various summer activities. Ray has dedicated himself to the youth of Winthrop in the pursuit of basketball excellence. I can think of nobody more fitting. An honor to rename the gym floor at the Winthrop High School the Ray Convery Court. So just to follow also policy, and just for, before we take our voter anymore discussion, Joe would like to see a plaque that is similar to what will be done for Dave Poole in, hung in a similar spot or an appropriate spot within the gym. And then also have a decal on the high school gym floor that would reside in front of the scorer's table. And this will be worked on with Joe, Ray, and Joel as AD. We are, Joe's very ambitious to have this dedication formally done, possibly by the end of basketball season. But we know that that could be too quickly. We know the floor obviously would not be redone by that time, but there is talk of either doing a decal or a projection of what the image might look like for the presentation, and we're hoping to get the work done over the summer when school would be out of session. We know that there is going to be a cost to this, and I have assured Joel that if there is any fundraising that needs to be done for this, because we haven't talked anything about cost, that I would be more than happy to head that up. And I have no doubt that we will raise whatever funds are needed to do that through the community and through alumni as well. And I think that is it for my end. Are there any questions? Or I don't know if Joe wants to add anything?
No, I think, I think you did an excellent job of summarizing everything. I mean, selfishly, I'll say that Ray was a mentor to me as well, which is what prompted this. And I'm glad that he and Donna are here right now. I really think that this is a meaningful tribute to such a, such an important community member that we've had. So I thank you guys for entertaining us.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Any, did you have something to add?
Just a little housekeeping thing. Can I ask for a friendly amendment to change the motion to approve the committee's recommendation for dedicating the basketball court at Winthrop High School Gymnasium to Ray Convery? We were intentional in our motion not to try to give away what was, so I'd like to put in the motion that it's dedicated to Ray.
Yes, to Ray Convery. That is an excellent idea.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Do you want to give Ray a chance to speak, or?
Does Ray want a chance to speak?
I just wanted to know I was very, very young when I had here in school.
That was before you had, like, my school or something?
No. I guess I would be remiss by not saying that I'm so excited to have the gym and the floor dedicated after two people who were both coaching when I was playing. And then ultimately, you know, have had a friendly, a friendship relationship, whatever, with both primarily with Ray when we were, when I was coaching before, you know, moved to this area where I was working as my wife's assistant coach. We, you know, we played and playing Winthrop when we joined the NBC, and that year we, you know, we, you know, I knew who Ray was because, you know, just everybody knew who Ray was. But to get a chance to play and to coach against him was really a lot of fun. We used to say, and I would sincerely mean this, that Ray and his teams were the kind that, you know, they could win, do really, really well every single year. And sometimes with people, depending on the way they do their job, people would get sick of that and say, oh, anybody, but, you know, whatever. They would never say that about Winthrop. Winthrop girls were always good. They were always classy and always reflected their coach. Ray has been a great guy, so I stayed out of this. I didn't want to influence any way at all because I would, I certainly cannot be biased. I'm excited that we're dedicating the jump to David. He deserves it. And I'm very excited to dedicate the floor to Ray because they're two very deserving people. So I'm honored to be the superintendent when both of these great recognitions are happening.
Thank you. Are we ready for a vote? All those in favor? We'll pass this unanimously. Thank you. Congratulations.
I have been in touch with Joel. He's been in on this stuff, and I know that Joe has been in touch with Joel too. So I will just bring him up to date. And I know that I'm off the committee, but I assure him that if anything needs to be done to help with this, that my dedication is still there as well, because I'm very honored to be a part of this as well. So, thank you.
It's time for public comments. Any public comments at this time? Anything left? No. Okay.
I asked about five minutes ago, didn't I?
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that. Okay, so do you have any more to say?
Just that we are doing the gym dedication to Dave Poole on December 22nd. I got that all out on social media. I'm gonna try to Facebook Live it as long as everything goes well, because I know that there are a limited amount of tickets. And just remind people that if they want to attend, that they do need to buy a ticket. It's expected to be around 6:40 PM, depending on how the game schedule goes. So I will update it on my page on Facebook for that.
Thank you. Timothy?
I guess I'd like to thank the youth basketball coaches, the third, fourth, fifth, sixth grade parents that are volunteering and their time with those small kids. Again, people volunteering for the community, giving back was something they learned. So that started this week, and they're giving them a lot of the time.
Good. It's so true. Thank you. Kelly?
I just wanted to recognize that our two student committee members were both on the high honors this past semester, and I just, that blows me away. I was never a high honor student, and I wasn't nearly as active as either of these ladies are. So I'm just, I'm impressed with both of you. It was a long list of students who were on honors and high honors, and it was just really impressive to see how, how wonderful our students do.
And might I ask that they probably were in either dual enrollment or AP classes as well, and still were high honors.
Blowing my mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe?
I want to say I appreciate the response to my appeal last night to figure out how they watched the girls' basketball team play at Mount Abrams. Came in wonderfully clear. I would have the person doing the play-by-play be a little bit louder, but for the most part, I, that was one of the key reasons I enjoyed it, because they kept identifying who the players were. That was really refreshing, because unfortunately, we haven't had that type of announcing take place at all the games and everything. But I would urge people to, if they have the opportunity, can't get to the games, to tune in, to stream in. It wasn't very difficult at all unless they told me where to go.
That app works, the Comcast app works so much better than NFHS, which seems to be down. Like, it's very disappointing for those who are paying for a subscription.
Right. I was just, that's what I said. They were using something different. I was telling the superintendent, I said, whatever it is, it's just like I had suggested, maybe it was still the superintendent, that we actually go with the people on the whole team, that we need to recruit people, because they are all over the state now, and they have an excellent opportunity for us to watch it. I bought that subscription, and it's quick to the end of the year, just to watch the wonderful game.
Yeah.
But I think that's important to a lot of people in town. They continuously talk with people who really appreciate being able to tune in and see those games. People are not going to a lot of places, as all of you know. People will just stay at home. And always nice watching Mount Abrams is that it seemed like the fans wore their masks, the players on the bench not only wore their masks, but they were separated quite a bit. And I thought it was an excellently well played game, so that was good.
Ollie?
We won by 35.
Still an excellent win.
That didn't bother me, quite frankly.
No, it bothered me.
The middle school and high school had their course of band concert last week, which was very successful. And then on Friday, this Friday and Saturday at 7:30, the high school is putting on their Play of the Odd Couple. It's the first live play in two years.
What is it again?
Uh, Friday and Saturday at 7:30 at the Fort Harris Center. And, yeah, so that'll be really great to see. And we have a new episode of WBOS coming out tomorrow.
We have to. Thank you, Ollie. I think you guys have said everything I wanted to say, so. So now I will entertain a motion to move into, to, I'm sorry, I need to put my glasses on. To enter into executive session to review evaluation of the superintendent pursuant to one MRSA 4056A.
So moved.
Second.
And we're not expecting any technicalities.
No. No, nobody needs to stay.